And call this meeting to order, February 28th, 2017, Joplin Schools Board of Education. This first note is for a session that is for the approving of the school calendar. This is a public hearing. We're required by statute if we start our school calendar 10 days prior to the first Monday in September that we have an open session, and that is the open session we're in now. Thank you, great. I make a motion that we close this session and move to our normal business.
So move.
Okay, second? So a motion by Linda, and I'll second. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that motion passes. Okay. Now, I'll call to order our regular session of the Joplin Schools Board of Education, February 28th, 2017 meeting. And Pat, roll call please.
Chris Sloan.
Here.
Laura Musser.
Here.
Sheriff Vermont.
Here.
Roger Van Hoor.
Present.
Jeff Coe.
Present. Deb?
Their president is not in the room.
Yeah.
No, they're not here.
So.
The court when they come.
All right, so why don't you guys join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, modifications needed to the agenda? Hearing no motion, I move that we approve the agenda as presented. I moved and Jennifer seconded. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, so that motion passes. So we're up to reports, board president reports. Celebrations, we have quite a few tonight, and I will read them quickly. That doesn't negate how many there are, and I hope not to take a lot of time. But we recently had the DECA and FBLA, 35 high school students have qualified for the FBLA state competition that will be held April 2nd through 4th, and 22 of the high school students have qualified for the DECA state competition to be held March 12th through 14th. So we've got a number of students representing, that's 57. At Royal Heights, they just celebrated their 100th birthday on January 30th. We had between 80 and 100 alumni of Royal Heights come back and see us, some previous staff and a lot of parents. So next, the Joplin High School Book Club held a reading of poems, short stories and excerpts from books from black authors to celebrate Black History Month. It was a fundraiser for the Joplin Emancipation Park Days. The Joplin High School Book Club plans to do this event next year and hopes to have even better participation from the community. Mark your calendars, February 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 next year.
Langston Hughes.
Yep.
One of our very own poets.
South Middle School, Stephen Lee Burrup, he is an eighth grader at South Middle School, wrote and published her, I'm sorry, Seven Lee Burrup, wrote and published her first book, The Power of Three, story about rabbits, seven raises rabbits and is writing a second book about them already. The Joplin High School sophomore class, the transition classes have been working on interview skills and creating resumes. On Thursday, February 16th, Joplin High School hosted a mock interview event for all sophomore students during their transitions class. This is the first in a series of events that will bring community business volunteers into the classroom to help prepare Joplin students for college and careers. Each of the businesses, the business volunteers worked with groups of 16 to 18 students to talk about their careers, explain the path they took to get there, and conduct mock interviews. Other dates on the schedule, March 16th, April 6th, and April 27th. So we've got a lot of folks from the community coming in and sharing their experiences with our high school students. The Joplin High School and immersion and cultural education co-hosted the foreign language field day at the high school. 16 area schools came on February 17th. It was the day that we had out of school, but they spent their day at the school, and this is an annual event that used to take place at Missouri Southern, that Joplin High Schools take over the hosting events, and they had several hundred students there. Next, Joplin High School is hosting the 54th Annual Ozark Speech and Debate Tournament. That is going to be Friday and Saturday, February 17th and 18th. Sorry, we already had it, yeah. They were looking for judges, and I was out of town that weekend. They had 24 area schools, about 450 students, and 240 adults volunteered to judge. Kelsey Norman had a math city night. Students used math skills to cash their paychecks at a bank, pay bills, move through the city and visit the arcade, nail salon, movie theater, Kelsey Cafe, and more. That was on February 21st, they had over 380 people there with 30 volunteers showing up. And then for the Golden Apple nominations, we had 43 teachers in kindergarten through 12th grade from Joplin Schools nominated.
That's awesome.
It's a huge number. The interview and selection process is underway, and the awards will be presented at the Joplin Area Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet held on Thursday, May 4th. So congratulations to the nominees, and on to the next steps.
Are those nominees listed somewhere?
They are not listed on here, but there is a link on our website to the Chamber of Commerce that has that. So that's all the celebrations I had. Policy Committee, did the Policy Committee, did you guys meet?
We did.
They let us come.
Yep. So we have the policies down here for second reading that we're first reading. We do, I think we've gotten through kind of our ones that have all been outstanding, we've gotten through them, so we're just kind of waiting for the next updates to come. There are still some finance ones that Paul's working on, but he was tied up with the FEMA audit, and so he's going to be working on those, right Paul?
Yeah.
Anyways, so it was a good meeting, it's a good committee, so we get a lot done.
Great. Data Analysis Committee, I don't believe we had a meeting in this interim from the last session, we'll have to look to see when that is scheduled and what the next step is there. Finance Committee, did you guys meet?
They did.
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did. Oh, Paul gave us, what was it we really talked about? We talked about the.
The comparisons.
We did a comparison to other districts.
We did a comparison with the other districts.
We shared most all of this with the whole board through the Thursday updates. And we also, the comparison was the, trying to come up with the total cost of a teacher comparison, looking at everything across the board so we could compare ourselves to our neighbors and some outliers. As well as, we looked at, talked about the next year's budget and the schedule for that, putting that together. Of course, we'll bring this year's, another set of budget adjustments for this year, which is a precursor to getting next year's budget for ongoing recurring expenses, you know, in the budget, so we can begin the year with a, our target is a balanced budget. We'll bring a set of adjustments in March 28th meeting for the board to consider. In advance of that, we'll meet again with the Budget Committee to review those in detail. And we also talked about the, a couple things that have been in the news media lately, the transportation reduction, which is kind of, I think three or four weeks ago, we heard a large cut number of around 35 or so percent, and perhaps the Governor Greitens has found his way back to not being so heavy with that cut in terms of some better news, but, so that's kind of out there bobbing, which is an example of why we watch the budget development at the state, we formulate our own projections, but in the month of March, we'll start, those will come into focus where the, we'll have preliminary budget numbers that are somewhat reliable, and then if the news improves, we hope we just grow that and not have to reduce that, as we talk about, you know, negotiations and budget development and that sort of thing. Lastly, we did talk about parents as teachers, some degree, the board's been updated on that, that, working with Sandra Cantwell and her team, trying to make sure we're operating efficiently as we deliver services to parents and students throughout the district, which we're really committed to doing. We know other districts around us do contribute some funds toward that, local funds, but she, Sandra's working closely with her staff to come up with the operations and any changes she wants to bring to that operation for efficiencies as we develop a possible request to the board to help with that operation in next year's budget. But that's what we covered at the, anything else?
I agree.
Yeah, we talked about all those things.
Forty-five minutes goes fast.
It did.
All right, Safety Committee, did you guys have a meeting?
The updates are contract, or bids are coming in tonight at midnight on the remaining seven schools for the safe entryways. Each school continues their CERT training so that they're up to date on the safety, and we're in negotiations with the city for our SROs and our crossing guards.
How is the, my mind just went blank, the program that we did, the lockdown?
The training for it, Carrie?
It's going well, and I see periodically principals are using the lockdown drill function to utilize that. I think I've seen some from Julie Munn School here not too long ago, and they're coming in intermittent, and so that's good, people are using them, getting used to use them. And we're, you know, Jim's goal was for all staff, 100% of the staff, to feel much more comfortable about what to do in case of a lockdown, and we're hoping that this makes a difference when the survey goes out.
Great. All right, next, Superintendent Data Report.
I want to welcome Steve to the table. He's been at it for about two weeks, and I can't keep up with this guy. He needs to go home and sleep once in a while, anyway, so I want to welcome him. And so, other than that, a couple other things, I'm just going to move it up as far as my conversation with Dr. Moss. I think the board did get a little bit of an update on that from her, as far as her perspective. I'm just really very impressed with her, her intuition, her sense, her humility. This is going to be, it's going to be a good seamless transition, met with her, with Steve, and we talked through his organization, I visited some of you about that, and so she really, really, we looked at her approach to title and special ed, and it pretty much aligns with what Steve's recommending, and what we're going to do to follow through with that. And really very lean and very efficient, so we had that conversation, a good three hours, two of those hours were really focused on understanding high performing systems, understanding what it means to be systemic, systematic, and so she's starting to make some connections with her own experience, but I do think she's wanting to learn really quick. Another thing that the, let's talk a little bit about the, Paul's going to take most of this time because he's going to give you an update on FEMA, so Paul, if you'd talk about the health and dental care insurance and where that's at?
It continues to get healthy as compared to last year, so kudos to the Employee Health Insurance Committee and staff and the board for wrestling with that difficult item last year. We're approaching, let's see, March 31st will be six months into the, halfway through the current health year, starts October 1st. So we'll watch it closely after people start meeting their deductibles in the second half of the year, and, you know, more payments will go out once you meet your deductible, and we'll see where that equilibrium takes us, but it's in a good position now. We are going to meet, I believe, March 7th. Becky England, coordinator of, and HR of benefits, is organizing an Employee Health Insurance Advisory Committee meeting. We'll get some updates from the last meeting, as well as take a look at some research with regard to self-funded plans and, you know, why that versus open market purchase, that sort of thing. So that's March 7th. The financial, the financial report this month was going to be centered on a FEMA report. If, Eric, if you could bring up that first chart showing the obligations in the header there, which obligations is referring to grants that have been agreed to to this point, and you've seen this chart before, it adds down to 15 million. These are the sources of monies, the obligations, or EDA grant for equipment through Franklin Tech, that are earmarked to pay for our Bank of America 15 million outstanding amount. They're earmarked to come from these areas.
There it is.
Thank you, Eric. So this has been out in the public domain, we've shown this to the parent teacher forums, the Data Committee, Board Data Committee, CPA Review Committee, and the Board Finance Committee, salary and benefits. So the numbers have changed a little bit, and we update this as project development takes place, but you see on the far right there, the FEMA has issued, I mean, the far right is when we have submitted our work to FEMA, going back to, what's that first one, January of 16, March, February 16, so we've gotten our work in, you know, for a number of months on some of those, and maybe over a year. You know, SEMA and FEMA are working our cases, but these are outstanding amounts from their current obligations that they expect to fund on our account when they're finished processing. So now, the SEMA part will pay the 10%, which is those two amounts at the bottom, 2.6 million and 1.6 million, they pay at the very end of everything, that's how the state, state procedures call for, they don't pay $1 of anything until all projects are closed down, so that's going to be at the very tail end of everything, that's a lot, large money to be at the tail, but that's the process the state uses. But questions on that, like I say, it's been out in the public domain, but it's important, and I'd say the one word at the, to contrast that with the next schedule, you're going to see, this is a listing of obligations, yes, FEMA does make some changes when they issue, make your final payment, they might take it down by a small percentage or relatively small dollars, but for, those are current obligations that they've committed to.
Those are promises.
Those are promises, obligations, grants, yes.
And the SEMA comes through as soon as FEMA's done, so that's a promise as well.
Right, at the very end of all that, the SEMA would cut loose what it's responsible to pay.
I'll share, so the important things to understand are FEMA will not pay us back until we have finished construction.
Right.
All that construction has been done.
Right.
The right-hand column shows the date that we submitted all of our documentation to FEMA.
Yes.
And now we're waiting for FEMA to take their action.
Yes.
And the last, the last piece that we submitted was September 27th, 16?
Yes, last.
That was the last one, so.
That was to SEMA.
To SEMA, okay, so July 30th was the last one in eight months, and we're waiting for all those to come?
Yes, actually, those determination letters have been received, but we've not received the funding following those determination letters. That's on the 1336, the rest of those, we have submitted by those dates, January on through September, yes.
What is the normal processing time? I know we have a guy that works for, on that.
Well.
I mean, it's a year out on most of them now.
I, yeah, I've received back some information, some of those are nine months or a year, but we're hoping, and we've been hoping for a while, that once they get through these first ones, that they accelerate, because the way we presented our documents were built the same way on every one, so it's taken nine months or a year to this point, I can just relate our own experience.
Paul, what is district fund balances and subsequent financing FEMA additional at $5 million?
Right, that's the, that's the amount that we have back, talked about back in 14, that we might, the project was large enough that we projected in the summer, spring of 14, that there might be an additional monies that we need to contribute of 8 million or so out of the district coffers, or get a 10-year or so financing plan, because our, we built more than insurance and FEMA obligations would fund, so we've known that.
Okay, so that's the addition, okay.
So it's gone from 8 million down to 5?
Our early projection of 8 is at 5 right now, and.
Okay, that's guaranteed.
So the total.
Well, it's obligated like a grant, so.
So the 15 million, that bottom number, is that what we, that's what we have coming in, or is that what we owe on the loans?
That's what we owe Bank of America today, but the listing is how we plan to fund that, which 5 million of that listing is us, and that would be over, say, say three years, as we'll get into the refinancing recommendation later. I believe the debt service schedule calls for us to pay principal of about 1.3 million in the spring for the next three years, that's three of those, a little bit more would equal that $5 million number.
And Paul, wasn't our hope was that errors and omissions money would come through to cover that 5?
I'm going to show you that, well, I mean, before we go to that schedule, I want to make the point that, you know, without any of that money, I mean, hope is good to have, but for the public and everybody to understand that if that, say, none of that came through, this is our plan, has been our plan from day one. So this is what's, we consider to be reliable, it is doable, we can afford this, our, three years of our principal payments, you'll hear about later in the meeting, falls inside our current ability to transfer funds from Fund 1 to Fund 4. Yes, it will require our operating balance to drop from, say, 18 or 19%, six percentage points or something, but we're glad to have a healthy operating balance to absorb, you know, what's due here on the back end of this rebuild project. But that's what the absorb, that's where the impact's going to be, operating balance will drop, but it's not a recurring cost, it's, we got to get through three years of paying this off and get it in the rearview mirror.
So the 5 comes out of the operating fund?
Right, balance.
And at one time, we talked about borrowing an extra amount, so now we won't need to borrow that extra amount?
Right, well, in effect, we are here at 5 million, we have been for some time, but this is the payback of that. We won't be paying back 8 from three years ago, we'll be paying back 5 with these other obligations coming through. So the use of our operating reserves will be limited to just over 5 instead of 8 like we were thinking about three years ago.
If nothing additional comes.
Off the next page.
From the errors and omissions.
Right, right, right.
So that is the worst case scenario.
Right, the worst case is none of that comes, and we live with what we have, and this is what we have, and our plan to pay off the refinancing that we're going to propose later tonight.
But three years ago, the worst case scenario was 8 million?
We were projecting as high as 8 million.
My first candidate was 8 million.
Right, so.
Okay, so.
So, but to your point, Dr. Fort, the, I'll have, as we leave this schedule, I can say, these are obligations, the next schedule are not obligated, we'll show on the errors and omissions you brought up that we are appealing, Eric. That's the, if you could shrink that just a little bit, but the, we're showing the, again, the header there says amounts not obligated, again, we're making appeals for expanded scopes of work. FEMA wrote the original scopes of work to replace the destroyed buildings, and we found some errors and omissions in how they wrote that. FEMA wrote the original scopes of work to replace the destroyed buildings and we found some errors and omissions and how they wrote that up. And we're going.
Technical as I am.
Right, we're making.
Eric's, Eric's, Eric's doing something, you're doing something. I think I'm hyping you.
Right, and so, so we, we've submitted these requests for asking FEMA, please broaden your original scope of work because we think you missed some things. That's that top line item at 100% cost. And of course, we know that if we win on, and, and you don't have to win all or none, they can do a, take, take that sixth, first project there, 6.5 million. They could, they could agree that it's a partial determination. They could award you 3 million out of that 6.5. So anywhere between zero and those numbers is, I mean, we're appealing to all the totals, but they can award anywhere between zero and those numbers.
I'm sorry, I just can't see it, but what is the total number of all of that?
I didn't, I didn't total it up because it's going to be a by project, it's going to be a by project award. And so instead of focusing on a total, I was just, and they're big numbers to begin with by project. And it's not obligated yet, but we're certainly think we made a good case or we wouldn't be pursuing appeals. And we're, we're confident we're going to gain some, but 85% of those 100% line items would be the most we would receive if you want to put a, you know, math to it, so.
So to make it simple, the previous slide was promised.
Right.
This is wishes.
Yes.
This is wishes. There's $35 million worth of wishes. If they pay for 20% of the wishes, then that covers the outstanding obligations.
Right, and the board can use this for.
And wishes are maybe, that's, maybe that's not quite right. It's things that maybe that they missed or didn't consider.
We're talking about errors.
Yeah.
It's.
But they're not promised, Jim.
They're not promised. They're unencumbered, they're not in any budget, they're not in any payback schedule for any financing.
That's why we can't.
If any of these dollars come in, the board will be asked, what do you want to do with these dollars? Because they're not, I won't budget these dollars this, the next spring for July 1. Until we see the funds, we'll, we'll discuss it with the board at that time. So that's the takeaway from this is the first schedule obligated grants and FEMA obligated. This schedule not obligated, but we think there's a case for it. We've made the case. We're hoping that we get a good hearing on this and we'll see where it takes us.
Paul, are there limits on what we could do with those funds if we got them? Could they go to teachers' or staff salaries?
Uh, the, indirectly, they could help, of course, there's some money and they're for Fund 4 usage. But let's say you garnered $6 million on, on one or some combination of those. It would go into Fund 4. Fund 4 balance would jump up by 6 million. For a while, for the next two or three budgets, it might, you might be able to let off bringing over $2 million from Fund 1 for three years in that example. Now that's, that means be careful and don't commit ongoing expenses, but it could help with Fund 1 balance more than anything. It could pop it back up.
Hey, you gotta be careful of recurring.
Recurring, yeah, right, but, so that's the indirect way it could help that fund, but not necessarily hiring teachers. But it could indirectly help the balance over there. Questions on that or anything?
I just think a frequent update is going to be very helpful for, for the community as well as for here.
All right, we'll bring this more frequently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Eric. All right. You already shared the, the new superintendent orientation.
Right.
You've been meeting with her by phone regularly and I know she's already been, and in person a couple of times already. And Steve, you had a chance, she, she met with you already, your position. So although she's not here with us physically, we're still calling on her and getting some pre-work done, so that's a plus. Consent agenda? All right. We're taking, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Dr. Fort made the motion, Chris second. If there's no discussion, please vote.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On number 2D, do we generally approve leaves of absence like that?
2D.
I'm not mentioning anyone in particular. It's just, it was a leave of absence that was, do we hold the position for that person? Someone wanting to go get a degree in something else?
By policy, by board policy, they are entitled to request of the Board of Education. And the key has been, and I checked just a little bit, it doesn't happen very often, but.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
The principal at North has a suitable replacement, that's a big, the big concern. So it does fall within your policy.
It does, yeah. And then the other thing I just want to throw out there because we talked about this when we were putting the agenda together, items four through seven, and Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but those have very little cost to them. So I just don't want the public to think that we're throwing in things that have huge cost in the consent agenda. Those are things that have very little to no cost associated with them. So I just want to make that comment.
Small, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right.
Okay, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Now we're ready for the regular agenda. Dr. Ritter?
Yeah, we have the school calendar, the school calendar led by Julie, why don't you come on up? And she really did an awesome job leading this, had a committee. And so why don't you just kind of take, take us from there? Committee's met several times.
Yeah, we did meet several times. The committee was comprised of administration, teachers, parents, students from the high school. We had all three sending zones, the high school included. So yeah, Jennifer was on the team as well, so. And then what we did was we came up with ideas, we did a survey, we went and addressed the teachers at each building and came up with three drafts, took those drafts to the parent forum, to the teacher forum, and also to the professional development committee. Came back to the table and it was pretty much a consensus for one of the drafts, which I think you should have in your packet for the final draft to present to the board. Some key points on that is starting school August 17, ending school with no snow days on May 16. Includes 170 student contact days, 176 teacher contract days, and six full day professional development. So that was, the biggest change was taking some of those half days and putting them into two full, two additional full days. So that is what we came up with.
Couple of things I would like to highlight. First of all, excellent job, thorough conversation, but really what we heard over and over again at the sites, I'm here at the sites as well, is a need for more adult learning, staff development, and I'm wishing they could have another five or six days, maybe seven days. That's kind of unique and different from, you know, not wanting them. Now they want them and they've, they've realizing that they're going to really want to collaborate, they want time together. And so basically Steve's going to need to have to figure out how the community can help us pay for that type of thing. So it's going to be in Steve's hands, no, not really. But either way, I think that was really the major outcome was staff feeling they need more time to be able to learn, which is really good. So anyway, I wanted to kind of highlight that, so.
And something I want to share is the teacher professional days are set up before school starts. So before they've got students in their classroom, they're doing as much of the learning as they can so we don't have to rely on substitutes during the year while they're getting trained. So I think that's listening to what the, what, what the input has been from around the tables. We want the contact to happen as much as in the classroom with their primary teacher as they can, so.
Also a cost saving.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask Steve, with the cognitive coaching that is going on this year, are you, is that able to be done? If you're going to do that next year, is that able to be done with what's been given to you as far as time?
Yes, because the, the last cohort of cognitive coaching will finish up this summer. And then we'll review kind of next year where we are in that process.
Okay. Okay, so as far as what you brought to us in the, your plan for staff development, this schedule fits your needs as much as we can give it to you as far as what it costs the district for those extra days? Okay.
All right, we got to take a motion on that. Well, I will go ahead and make a motion that we accept the proposed calendar as presented.
I'll second.
So I made the motion and Jennifer seconded. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, that passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice work, Jim.
Thank you. All right, next item up, council payable, Paul?
Okay, the, we have attached bill list items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits. The administration recommends the board approve payment of bills, the amount of $9,799,973.3. And when the time's right, I do have submitted in advance three board questions that I can speak to, so.
So we need a motion, second, then you'll speak to it.
All right, so a motion by Sherri.
Second.
And a second by Debbie.
So go ahead.
Questions? Go ahead.
I had one question. The Apple computer purchase described as Mac bear, excuse me, MacBook Air 5 pack and that's 13-inch computers. That was for occupational therapy students. One was a five-pack and then four individuals, so I guess there was nine total. And are they replacements or do we need 10 more? They were going to serve, based on IEPs, 10 more occupational therapy students. The other questions were automotive technology. We wrote out quite a few checks, $104,000, $105,000 worth of payments to automotive technology. That relates to December board action item that was, it does run through the Franklin Tech accounts, but that was an EDA equipment funded grant that sourced monies for those purchases. So that's the, that's the picture of that. And then we also had a question about the check being written to JHS Project Prom. And that money came in from a donor, went into the general district's account and, but it was intended for the prom coming up. So we wrote it back out to the committee.
Okay. It said donation, but it was going away from us.
Going opposite way.
So I thought, how's that work?
Right.
But it was a correction.
Rather than a question.
Yep, yep, okay. Any other questions? There's no further questions? Be happy to entertain a motion to approve as presented.
We have that.
We did that, yeah.
We just seemed to both.
Sherri did, and I seconded.
They brought it.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that passes. All right. Paul, I think you're up next with the.
Yes, we'll ask, currently we have on contract George K. Baum to provide us financial advisory services. So we'll ask Joe Kinder and Chase Barnes to join us. I'll kind of touch on the item and then we can discuss. We did go out and negotiate and appraised the board in recent weeks with our current bank, Bank of America that we've been doing business with to help us on financing the end of the rebuild project that we touched on earlier. I won't read the entire item, but we had some pretty good negotiations with them. We, they gave us an offer four or five weeks ago and we kind of worked over that offer and improved on it. The whole purpose of this, again, is to give us some time. They had extended, they, we, they came on with us back in the spring of 15 originally. And they extended this time last year for one year in hopes, anticipating that perhaps more of these revenues would come in. And of course, they're like us, just learning how long this timeline can be working with the government. So they indicated they would work with us to a point. They did agree as we negotiated, we'd like to have a three-year option, a call option, so that as we accumulated funds, which we are confident that the funds that we just discussed earlier would be collected within three years. So that's why we really pushed for a three-year option on their longer debt service schedule that we'll talk about. But, so we were glad to get that option because we think after three years, that would be paid off with those collections and this refinancing would accommodate that. And even though it's written for a longer term, up to 10 years, we don't think we'll need anywhere near half of that time to pay this off. So with that, I'll just cite the recommendation for, prior to discussion, that we, the board approved the negotiation to refinance the existing lease purchase agreement with Bank of America and also direct bond counsel Gilmore and Bell to prepare a resolution to adopt the transaction for the board meeting in April 25, 17, with an anticipated closing on or about May 31, 17.
So moved. Second.
Motion by second. Motion by Sherri. Second by Chris. Any discussion?
I have a question. So what is the cost, and I just don't see it, maybe I'm not reading it right, but what is the cost to the district in additional interest for doing this? So what is our cost for doing this, including refinancing costs?
Yeah.
Well, it's estimated right now because the interest rate, the way that this is going to happen is that this will actually close at the time that the other vehicle is up at the end of May with the idea that as many reimbursements as you get in in the meantime, you can pay down without having to issue them out 10 years. So you can shrink the actual size of the principal. Right now, you know, loosely, we've estimated $2.6 million in interest cost if you go out the full 10 years. Now, one of the reasons of the work, that, that working with Bank of America has been good is because your CFO has been doggedly negotiating with, with Bank of America to get terms favorable to the district. And the three-year call provision, the ability to call that in after only three years means you might pay, you know, I'm going to ballpark the number here, but maybe a million dollars or less in interest. But that allows you to get those funds in and pay those off as quickly as possible to minimize that financing cost.
Our current, our current budget, just so you know, from what Joe says, is the hard numbers, the budget in fact. We currently have $300,000 budgeted for interest for this year, as I mentioned in my board update last Thursday. We'll probably have to grow that to 400,000. Looking at this estimated debt service schedule that the bank has proposed, we're probably going to be paying closer to 400,000 a year in interest. So I think within the $2 million capital projects funds budget, we can pull over another 100,000 for interest and take down the, the total for everything else by 100,000. To stay within the total current capital projects budget that we'll be likely proposing this time next month, the 400,000 interest should be in there. The principal amount that you've seen on your schedule of 1.3, 1.3, 1.3, 3.5 goes back to three of those and a little bit more make up that $5 million drop in the operating fund over three years, starting with this, this year's June 30 closing to get a jump on it, that we drop operating fund balance, bring that money over to Fund 4 and pay that out for a three-year drop in reserves, operating reserves to pay out that springtime principal for three plus years. So that's the payment, am I saying that right, Joe?
Yeah.
That's the payment structure. You pay interest twice a year, you pay principal in the spring of the year. And that's, that's our plan to pay this estimated schedule. We're not, and we're not, tonight's action item is again to approve the negotiation and direct bond counsel to work with the other side, the banks counsel to put this deal together, to bring back with you a resolution in April. But it's a good faith adoption, you know, tonight to say, go forward and put the deal together. Would you want to add anything to that?
Well said. So, so the alternative is we take $15 million that we owe out of all of our operating expenses and have nothing to operate with? Or we continue to finance the loan?
Yes, about, that's, yes.
So that people understand.
Right, that's a good way to say it.
There's almost, there's a small choice.
Right, it's.
But if you get the reserves to zero, the state comes in and will.
Not even to zero.
Well, not even to zero. And I, I think right now we're, I mean, we had projected around 18% a couple of months ago and looking at next June 30. But yeah, we, we, I don't think we have that amount to write a check out of, to be quite honest about. So you're describing a choice that's so obvious that.
Right, and that's what, that's what the question is. If we have the money, why aren't we using it to pay? Well, we do, but then we can't pay for anything else.
Right, right, exactly.
And if health insurance turns the other direction, then we have to go get a loan to borrow for a normal. So what the option is here is to use this vehicle for 15 million minus whatever we collect before then. It may be 14, it may be 13. Whatever comes in, we'll only borrow that amount that, that adds up to those totals.
Correct.
And then although it's for 10 years, we have, we have the option to pay it off in three years when we anticipate receiving everything.
Three years or any point after, we, we're going to accumulate funds and look in 36 months to make a full payment. If we fall short, we can pay after that date in three and a half or four years. But they, we need to make a, pay it completely off at that point. Is that right? Your, your second payment after three years has to finish it.
Okay.
So there's a penalty, so there's a, I'm saying, so there's a penalty for paying before the three years?
There, there's just, that's the best we can negotiate. They started out saying, let's just do a 10-year, and we said, no way, we're not going to pay this kind of interest for 10 years.
But there's not a penalty?
But there's not a penalty?
So we...
There's no penalty.
Between three and ten.
You, you, yeah, you just have to, you're obligated to pay the interest for three years. So there's no penalty, you just have to pay, make the interest.
Based on whatever that total is on June one?
Right.
Based on whatever that is.
This year.
That's right.
That's correct.
And you could take, let's say on June third, you get all your money, and you can take that money and invest it, and then counteract a lot of that interest cost by that, by, by investing in a vehicle.
Which we fully plan to do, with the, with the help of George K. Baum.
Yeah.
We are paying interest on a loan, but we're also making interest on a loan. Talking about four hundred thousand dollars a year in interest, offset by the earnings we get from investing the funds as they come in, waiting for that thirty-six month.
But there's no penalty for not stretching it out to pay over ten years? We can pay it off earlier without penalty, just not earlier than three years.
Correct.
Correct.
I nailed it.
Okay, any, any further questions? We had a motion by Sherrod, and a second by Chris. Okay, please vote. And this is voting the authorization of the negotiation. And the final amounts will be done in May, June.
In, in April, but this is going to, the attorneys will get together with this and do a lot of work to work up the documents, so it's a serious step.
Yep. Please vote. Oh, you did.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, John Lewis.
For everybody's information, by the way, Warren Buffett bought major interest in Bank of America yesterday. So a little bit of confidence. He knew we were going to do this, see, that's why.
Well, and interest rates are still historically low, so it's still a good time tomorrow.
I think it is. Thank you for coming all the way from Kansas City, guys.
It's still not easy to do this.
No.
No, it's a lot of interest.
Again, we have a Neosho graduate with us.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Paramedics as well.
Also.
Good to see you.
We class the rest of your life.
That's right.
All right, Dr. Seketa?
Okay.
Drop on Early Childhood Education Center?
We have several items to talk about here, and I want to bring some fine folks up here, Dave Pettit with our Buildings and Grounds Department, and we have Aaron Height with Crossland, Ryan Walters with Hollis Brown, and Bailey Stamm is coming up here as well.
Can I thank you?
And Cody White's here, Crossland's, or Amy's. Okay, we anticipated some questions, because there's a lot of things that's happened on the site, and it just seems like every week it's a dynamic process, as, as we've learned. And we're, we have three big change orders to talk about, and we want to make sure that you get a good explanation of why they're occurring, what's happening, and then also how that affects the, the total project cost, the contingency and everything else, and we'll put the slides up and talk to you about that. So the first one is the existing power line, and who wants to speak about that? Anybody in particular? Dave? Okay.
Unfortunately, I guess, a tale of two early childhoods.
Move that mic over.
We have a tale of two early childhoods. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. We've had some fantastic weather, but we've run against a few minor challenges. What you're seeing here right now is a change for relocation of the electric power lines for the new Early Childhood Center. Need to enter an agreement with Empire District Electric Company for twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars to make that relocation change.
Okay, and can you share why we want to relocate it?
And why we didn't know about it?
I'm going to defer, I'll let Ryan, Ryan address you on that one.
Okay, so the existing electrical service runs practically to the middle of the site, which served the previous building that was there. So during design, it was always planned to relocate that, that was on the drawings for information for the bidders. But that work is not done by the contractor, it is done by the utility, and that's the responsibility of the owner of the property. So during the bid analysis, we took into account what they had originally told us was going to be the amount to move that power line, so that we could have a more efficient site, and one that works better for traffic flow and those sorts of reasons. They have moved it again at their prerogative, which has changed the number a little bit against us.
So Empire did that?
Yes.
And is that typical?
Yes. Unfortunately, util, you can, go ahead, Erin.
Utilities can basically do what they want, so it's a monopoly. It's not like we can deny paying them and go to somebody else, like we can a normal subcontractor.
Right.
A single-source provider.
Yeah.
So if we said no, what would happen?
You don't get power.
And if we say yes, can they move it again?
Potentially, I guess. It still has to be engineered, and this is just the start of that process.
And what reason is given that they need to move them differently than what they already had said they were going to charge, and this is where the lines need to be, and it's X amount of dollars? And now they're coming back and saying, oh, we need to move them. Why do we need to move them? When they already told us this is where they need to be.
What will often happen is, during design, they will see drawings, and they will give a general understanding of, okay, yeah, that makes sense, you want to move the power to there, here's a ballpark number. They typically won't spend the man-hours, the time, to do the correct analysis, to understand exactly what they're getting into. Their field personnel, who are expert of those things, will do better analysis in it. In this case, they're concerned that we would have to potentially cross some of the detention areas of the site, which are on the south end of the property, to get to the box to service it. So that's why they've moved it again, from where they directed us to during design.
And how does this twenty-nine thousand compare to what their first cost was? Is this ten percent change? Is this a fifty percent change?
The additional, the additional cost for the second change was eleven thousand and some change. So the original was around seventeen, something.
Usually, the way this works too, if they do have a savings in something that they find, it kicks back to us too. But this is like the worst possible scenario type thing, and then, a lot of times anyway, if they save a little money along the way, or something's easier, they'll kick back some. Is that right or not?
That is right, yeah. As an example, on the water line, per the water district's direction, we were able to shorten that, and it's a small credit to the project. So it kind of depends, once the utilities get onboard at the, beyond the final design and get their teeth sunk into things, their costs can move around. That's why those costs are not included in the contractors, one of the reasons why they're not included in the contractors.
And how far are we till we get to that point? Where they stop moving things around?
This, this should be it. They should not move again.
We're, we're at the end of the potential changes that are coming.
He says it confidently.
From a utility.
From a utility.
How much have we, how much did we set aside for contingency? How much did we set aside for this?
Yeah, and we're going to show you exactly what, where we were at the end of January, and if you approve all these, where we would be after the approval of these action items.
So let's look at the next one, and then we'll look at the summary that you got, so that we can take them all at once.
Okay. The next one is Empire again, and this is the fiber relocation.
The fibers, actually, the telephone lines, they will be able to, they're going to need to relocate those for the, for the same reasoning, to stay out of the detention area at the south end of the property, and this will run concurrently alongside the electric.
Again, because it was an estimate, and then when they got in, and they said it further.
Okay, we have, the next one is really the big, tough one. Well, they're all tough, but anyway. We have mine caps that we found, prospector holes, and concrete footings. And there's kind of a long story that goes with that, but I'll let Dave start, and then Aaron and Ryan can, can add on to.
We, we currently have three prospector holes that we have, that we have determined and found on site. This change order will be for, for digging those down, spreading that out, pouring concrete, essentially capping the top of that, so that we can build across that. None of those luckily sit right smack in the middle of our building, but they do amount to attach them to the, to the outside edge of those. The concrete and footing removal are from the previous building that was there. They are sizable, to say the least, from the mining in that vicinity, that they overbuilt that to make sure that they were spanning. We were not aware of those footings being covered, and so during the excavation, those were uncovered, and the cost that you see there is broken down for a change order to cover those mine caps, currently three of those, and then to remove the, the concrete and footing that we have found. This is expensive free property.
Yeah.
So...
Beware gifts.
Didn't we do searches and look at mine maps and all that?
Go ahead, Ryan.
Before this?
We had a medical building there.
This is a big dollar.
Cody?
Yes, Cody.
Yeah, we actually, we did do geotech investigation. We did sixteen borings on site, which is actually probably more than what the typical standard of care would be for a project of this size. Did a grid across the site, and one of the borings would have actually been near to those concrete foundations, but the way they're, the way they're oriented, we missed it with that, with that particular boring. We did, you know, a lot of mine research, the orientation of the building, where it is at, is, is due to that, that mine research. And these foundations are sizable, like Dave said, because of the area where they're at. That's the area where they had trouble getting foundations even built for the previous building. So that's why, that's why they're so large, because of the mining in that area. So the building is set where it's at because of that research, to get out of that mining area, so.
I would add a little extra background on that. So the sixteen boring grid is probably three times what you would typically see for a building this size, and given that we're only a four-acre site, that's overkill to do that. Fact is, we just didn't hit any of the concrete. The concrete that we have discovered, and doing some additional research and reaching out to different folks and some contacts that David has gotten to us, we've learned that the majority of the building is demolished, but when they got to this section of the building, they told the previous owner, this was not in our contract bid, this is extreme, and they told them, okay, leave it there, don't disturb the mine, move on with it. Like I said, we missed it with the mine, with the borings through design, but the extensive research that we did do caused us to redesign during the design. So our first round of design, which about halfway through the project, we had this completion of this report, we can show you the documents that changed the building dramatically to move it out of this section of the site altogether, to minimize as much as possible the effect on the building. So everything that we're talking about tonight does not affect the building, will not affect the building's performance. It all has to do with site circulation and clarity's through there, so.
So it was assumed that when they cleaned up the building, they took the footer and foundation with them?
Yes, yes, and, and it should have been the case, had that building not sat on top of that mine cap.
A question, a question for Ryan. The, let's say that one boring did, would have hit this, and you knew that at the design phase. You, of course, would have probably done more borings, kind of got a picture of what's down there, but if you could, you know, had known what was down there in design phase, would you have brought that to the contractor bidding documents that you've worked up, and the contractors would have bid to pull this out, or something or other?
Yeah, well, I'll let Aaron speak to how he would have bid it differently. I can tell you from an investigation standpoint, though, we would most likely have done test bidding, and we would have started to spend a lot of design fee and other funds from the project, looking...
We would have paid for it either way.
I mean, that's kind of...
Yeah, yeah, and the bottom line is, the concrete was there, always there, it does not change the design now, how it would have changed bid day.
Well, and I think it would have been hard to quantify that amount. You know, the building itself, if you look at an aerial, it's kind of like a spider web. There's areas that are just void of concrete, and then there's others that just go crisscrossing. Right in the center of the building, there is a mass footing that's probably six foot wide by six foot deep, and it has number ten bar, which number ten rebar is an inch and a quarter. Typically, what you see on a building like this is a number six bar, which is five eights, or no, or six eights. So, you know, it's one of those deals that I don't think, even if, even if we would have ran into it during the geotech report, we could have been able to quantify it as a, a general contractor, or somebody bidding the project into the magnitude of what it actually is.
And this is the reason why we built in a major, major-sized contingency. And so, let's jump to that. I'm bridging that over.
It's fraky.
Okay, so I, I do have, and I'm not so concerned about the fact that we have to do this, I mean, I think these things come, my concern is that we stay in budget.
Yeah, that's what we're going to show you.
So Bailey, I guess my question to you is, this is coming out of, having to come out of our general fund, how quick, but it says it will then come from the contingency fund of five million dollars from the city of Joplin. How quickly does, do we get this money reimbursed to us? Because this is obviously not something we have budgeted for.
Simultaneously.
So as soon as...
The turnaround time for reimbursement is very short for a grant of this size. We're seeing reimbursement happen, like, within the next month.
Okay, so it's not like it's going to cause something to our budget that's going to kind of knock us off whack while we wait for this FEMA to come?
I mean, June thirty, we have an accounting, because that's the end of the year, but with thirty days is pretty good collection rate.
And the good news with funding this stringent is absolutely everything is approved before we do it. So all of these change orders, like, we're seeking board approval for these change orders tonight. Not only will they be approved by our board, they'll also have to be approved by the city and the state. So they're approved before they're executed, and we're guaranteed that they'll be reimbursed.
Okay, so how much of our contingency is gone?
Now, we're going to...
That's what we're going to do.
Real close. I'm very excited to tell you, it's only going to cost us a hundred and fifty dollars for temporary easement, okay? For Mercy's property. Okay, so that's on there too, and so Eric, if you get a chance there...
Are we paying that hundred and fifty dollars to the city for the easement?
Yeah, no, that's the, that's from our budget, but who's it going to?
Who's it going to?
Um, Mercy, yeah.
Mercy's a great partner.
Yeah, and the search, the search for the information. Okay, as you see at the top, far right, the project total expenditures, allowances, nine million seven hundred and fifty thousand, and with the commitments on the next line, original commitment, forty-eight thousand for administration, seven hundred and fifteen thousand for design engineering, and the facility construction of eight, a little over eight million. So the accumulated change orders, administration, there's, there are none, there were none at the end of January. New contract expenses, that thirty-eight thousand should represent the billing permits, is that right? And then the design engineering was the month before, I believe those were our special inspections, and then the printing, I think, also went into that. So you can see there was a total of a hundred and sixteen thousand at that point. And then the adjustments below, is the line below, and you can see the new contract expenses all the way across to nine million, and then our contingency was six hundred and thirty-six thousand and eighty-eight dollars. All right, that was at the end of January. Now, if you approve all these tonight, in February, you can see the contingency at the bottom right, I'm sure your eyes went right there directly, that came down from six hundred plus thousand dollars down to four hundred and four thousand. And you can see that big number, a hundred and eighty-four thousand, under facility construction, which represents a lot of where we're at tonight, so.
Is there a domino effect of having to remove these footings, or do anything like that that's going to change? I mean, more fill, things like that? What's the next step, after you pick all that out?
No, actually, the, the bottom part of the footings are right where we need to be. So the footings are essentially sticking up out of the ground at grade of where we need to be. So you remove those, and we're at grade, so, no.
So you don't have to fill with anything where the footings were?
No.
No, I, one of the strategies to keep costs down on the site was to cut the grade down all the way across the site. We had a substantial amount of unusable soil, unbuildable soil on the site as a result of the soil borings and the other site studies we did, so we knew we'd be taking dirt away. So we designed the site in such a way that we would not have to bring extensive amount of new soil back on. And that's one of the reasons why the footings are now sticking six feet above where we need them to.
I understand why you couldn't have foreseen this, because even if you found a footer with a drilling, you either say, okay, there's some down there, but this is like those bunkers they use for war. I mean, this stuff is thick and heavy, and, but still, you know, it's, it's eating away at our reserve. We're getting there.
It's one-third of it.
Yeah, and so...
So what happens if we get to the end of our reserve and our reserve is all gone? Do we start changing the material?
No, no, we're gonna change, we're gonna change our plan.
This material, we get this material?
Well, the first thing is we would look at the alternate bids, okay? And there's a critical time between April and May and early June, where if things keep going like they're going, we're gonna have to start making decisions on the alternate bids that we put in and how we accept them. And then things that enhance the project would come off first.
Correct, gentlemen?
Yeah, part of the bid day strategy and design was to build in extensive alternates into the pricing. So one thing we had on bid day was tight pricing across all the bids, which enabled us to confidently take all seven alternates. That being said, we don't need to build all seven alternates if we run into a budget issue. So there's considerable flexibility in there in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that could come back onto this if we run into, continue to run into extreme things like this. That being said, Aaron, you'd say we're ninety percent of the way there in terms of design grade. In the process of discovery, these prospecting holes, these sorts of things, we should be very near the end. And this represents the largest risk of the construction process. Once we get footers in the ground and we can start coming out of the ground, the only thing that can happen there is we didn't have something coordinated correctly, or something happens on the site and somebody runs over something.
Or sinkhole opens up.
Stop.
No, it happened, we've seen it happen, right there.
Mr. Bloom and Doom.
Right there, I've seen it happen.
We don't need to do that.
I just, so basically, these things are not wants, but these are needs. We need electricity, we need the phone line, we need to get rid of these footers to move forward. These are not just things we want, these are things we need to do.
As long as our children are going to be safe in this building.
That's correct.
And I just think this board doesn't want any of the might as well spending. You know, we have a budget and we wanna stick to it, so it's good to know we have alternatives.
I'd like to make a motion that we put all three of these, the easement of the hundred and fifty dollars to Mercy and the two change orders, put those into one vote.
There's three change orders. There's three change orders?
Oh, three change orders, and put those together. Let's get it done and vote on it all together, and I move that we do so.
Motion by Chris, second by Deb.
Deb.
If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys.
Passes. Thank you, everybody.
And we don't wanna see you again.
Yeah, don't come back.
Hey, I wanna publicly thank Dave Pettit, because we've had to call him two weekends in row for Operation Fair Godmother, so thank you, Dave.
Item six, Dr. Segeta.
Dr. Segeta, the SRO.
Yes, um, school resource officers, very, very important to us, as we all know. And we've had an agreement with the city for many, many years, and we pay fifty percent of the cost of their wages at our school. And we wanted to make sure that you also knew that we're still utilizing the SROs to teach fifth grade students. It was a DARE program, some of you knew, they were in the schools before. Now it's changed, they've changed the name of it to Rise Above, and they've kinda really expanded the scope of what they do. So it's really not only just drug awareness anymore, but it's really good character building, internet safety, friendships, and so on. You can see that on there. So I would like to, you know, hope that we would pay that, somebody would make a motion, we would pay that tonight. Keep our, continue to keep our good relationship with the, with the city in terms of our SROs in there, making sure our kids are safe and our faculties and staff are safe.
All right, motion by Lori, second by Linda. Questions?
Now, where does, Brian, I know he's not our SRO, but he is kind of law enforcement there at the high school as well.
As attendance.
Okay, as attendance officer now, how is he funded now? It's part of the regular budget, correct?
He is part of the regular budget.
And we're gonna have to, you know, talk, talk about that eventually.
And so this is four SROs, one at each middle school, serving their sending schools, one at the high school. Then we also have Jim, and then we also have Brian.
Yes.
So we have three at the high school, just funded in a variety of ways.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Because on the safety committee, that, that's one of our concerns, is that we have enough to take care of.
Isn't that the same amount as always there?
But the funding has varied, because there's been donations or grants in the past.
That's the same number we've had, isn't it?
No, I think Brian's in addition.
No, Brian's been, uh, well...
Well, there's still total three, though.
Since we've been at the new high school, we've had an additional person there, in addition to Jim Hounchel. It was Victor Sly, then it became Brian. So since we've been at the new high school, and that was grant funded for a time, that one position.
We were hoping for Salvation Army grant funds, but it doesn't appear to be coming through.
Cause we need a few more.
How does this compare to what we paid this year? Is it pretty comparable?
That amount there, yes.
Yes.
It just raises by inflation or...
So not, yeah.
No, it's very minimal.
And these were already budgeted?
Yeah, and we, and we are renegotiating, or not negotiating is right, we're reworking the agreement with the city to make sure that, uh, Jim and I had a meeting with some folks the other day from the city that, that the person that's overseeing the, the SROs so that we can make sure that our crossing guard situation and our agreement, it was time to update it. It just was time for both entities, we both realize that.
This has been a great partnership with the city over the years, with the crossing guards, as you mentioned, and, and these SROs, it's been very, very good.
So these, are, are these employees of the city?
They are.
That we are...
We fund half, we fund these positions.
Right.
All right, if there's no further questions, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that motion passes. Okay, last thing, pluses and deltas.
So what one, Walt tonight?
Well, I really appreciate the explanation as to why...
I'm sorry?
I appreciate the explanation from the construction people and Carrie as to why these expenses come up.
Okay, is that also true for the FEMA discussion?
Absolutely, that's true. I think Paul explained that very clearly tonight.
Okay, good.
I think it was good to have it at this point, too.
Yeah, we need to counsel, have that, I think. Okay, and the other, as far as what you're enjoying?
I got some, I got some announcements and pluses. Uh, we've got two board candidates here with us tonight. Derek Gander's here, and Deborah Gould is here, and...
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you, guys, for, for coming to one of our very short meetings.
Which is another plus for tonight.
Which is another plus.
I was gonna say that.
A couple upcoming announcements.
And you'd have to have our party break.
Uh, South Middle School Drama Students are presenting the play Mystery in the Mansion, Thursday, March sixteenth. The mission's free, come on out and support them. At the Joplin High School, the Drama Department's Spring Musical is Cinderella. That's May fourth, fifth, and sixth at seven. Uh, and then an additional matinee will be held on May sixth at the Joplin Performing Arts Center. And then at the Joplin High School, the Drama Department also has JHS Theater Extreme Trivia. Use your brains to help JHS Drama Department raise money to build the awesome set for the musical Cinderella. Uh, so fifty dollars for a team of six, that'll be Saturday, March eighteenth, so, and that'll be in the Black Box Theater. So a couple of activities going on, thank you, everybody, if there's nothing else to add.
And what about opportunities for improvement? Anything as far as that? Jumped in, I didn't quite get to finish that. Anybody? Anything as far as getting better?
I think we need to get Steve a nameplate.
Well, we're working on that. We're trying to get him to spell his name for us.
But you have to purchase that yourself.
We're out of money.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Anyway, good enough?
All right, thank you, everybody, uh, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Deb, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that motion passes, word adjourned, thank you.